All this means to order, but we stand for the Federalist.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, um, good evening, everyone. So I just, that, um, is Emery. Wieland? Wieland? Wieland. Um, and Emery wrote me a letter a few months ago saying she had some ideas for development in the city. So I wrote her a letter back and we talked about, um, having her come in and lead us in the pledge. So, thank you so much for doing that. That was great. Um, let's see here. Let me just get to the packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Do we need to add our items to the agenda?
Um, yes. So we need to add communication, franchise ordinance and fees, and then the 2020 council appointments to the new business.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Alright, um, we have a motion by council member Henry and a second by council member McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, um, let's see. Then, next thing up is that we have community comment for anything that is not on the agenda. Hearing none, we will move on to presentations and reports. Um, so the first thing that we're gonna do tonight is the Community Service Award. Um, and this year it goes to Greg Osterdike. Um, for those of you who don't know, and I don't think that there is a single soul who doesn't know, but Greg, um, served the City of Carver as mayor for four years, among of litany of other things. But we're here tonight to kind of celebrate his service to the community and specifically his role in the City of Carver. Um, when I moved to the City of Carver in the spring of 2012, I attended my first Steamboat Days committee meeting. Um, and it was after that meeting that even after living here for two years, um, I left there and I went home and I told Zach, like, "This is a great group. Like, I really feel like a member of the community." Um, and it was a combination of Greg and Tim Craig that really made me feel welcome. Um, and it was not long before I became the PR gal, um, for Steamboat Days. That was the year that you remember that we all hopped in the back of a Yukon and went to, um, Toby Keats to audition bands, um, which was amazing. There was this group of people that I'd only known for a month or two and we were heading to St. Louis Park to audition the bands for Steamboat Days. Um, in 2016 and 2018, when I was running for council, um, and when I was running for mayor, Greg sat down with me and he took all the time that I needed to answer my questions, address my concerns, tell me what to go, what to do, who to talk to, what he would do differently as I was kind of running my campaigns. Um, when I met with him in 2018, it was after he had been diagnosed, um, and he was, he was not feeling well that day. He was definitely not having a good day. Um, but he, that didn't stop him from giving me all the time that he needed, answering all of my questions, being really forthcoming, um, with answering any questions I had, but then even going out of his way to bring up things that I didn't even have on my radar. Um, he was terrific. And that's who Greg was, like, always had all the time in the world for people, um, and was so giving of his time and so generous of his time. Um, a week before his death, I was texting Greg about smart light bulbs and what brand he knew the most of. Greg was my favorite tech weenie, which is not my term, Lori, but it's one that I loved and so adequately described him. He always knew what was going on and tech stuff was such his wheelhouse and he knew exactly what was going on and I knew he'd have a good recommendation for me. And he did. Little did I know that I would get a call almost exactly a week later, um, about his death. So, this is not the outcome, um, we, any of us planned for or any of us saw coming. Um, but we all really appreciate Greg's commitment, um, and his dedication to the City of Carver through his service on council. Um, so with that, do you guys wanna add anything just to totally put you guys on?
No, I think you didn't actually.
Yes.
I knew you would.
Uh, Greg is very special. He and I ran together, um, when he ran for mayor and my first term as council member. So, I always remember Greg as, we were the green ones on the group. And, uh, he also called me out for Steamboat Days and I'm still on that committee. But, um, no, he was a, he was a leader and, um, he gave so much in all the organizations in town. Um, I just, I thank him very much and I thank you for your, for you too. That's what I got.
Sure. Um, if you guys could please stop crying, because it's, I'm crying out. Um, you know, Greg, obviously with Alliance Club, um, we worked together and he was one of the founders of the Sawy Bottom, which is coming up. And I don't think that, I mean, we'll make it through this. Um, but anyways, it was really special that he started an event that he unfortunately ended up becoming a recipient of. And, um, we're in the midst of planning our, our next one and it's really hard this year. So, um, we miss him and I don't know who to turn to for anything electronic anymore. So, um, yeah, it's been, um, it's really sad. We miss him a lot. So, thanks for being here, Lori, and city.
Um.
And you thought I was supposed to hold you together.
I was gonna say, Christine and I have a, if we had need to tap out agreement.
Yeah, I'm tapping.
Um, so, um, you know, after Greg's death, we kind of, Christine and I talked a little bit about how we were gonna remember him at a city level. And Greg's involvement was so much bigger than a tree or a park bench. So with that, um, I would like to make a motion that the Community Service Award in the City of Carver, from this point forward, be named the Greg Osterdike Community Service Award.
I would like to second that.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So with that, I want to award to our very first Greg Osterdike Community Service Award. Okay.
Where?
Uh, oh, there.
Nice seeing you again, Tim. Come to Carver anytime. Bring Laura.
You'll be here five times a week.
Yes, Wednesday and Thursday for sure now, too.
Uh, I was here on Saturday. Alright, um, with that, we will move to the Employee of the Year Awards. Um, so, um, in the City of Carver, we always do two Employee of the Year Awards. One for a full-time personnel. Oh, we're gonna split this, right? Because, okay. Um, so we are gonna focus on Jason Hanson, who is the winner of the award this year. Um, Jason's been with the city since August of 2017. His focus, uh, is maintenance of the park system. So, um, earlier in the work session, we talked about how popular the question on the Carver Life Facebook page is, is, "When is the ice rink gonna open?" Um, and it's only because you did such an awesome job with that last year, that everybody is, you know, it gets to be 27 degrees outside and people are like, "Well, we gotta go skating. Let's go skating." Um, so Jason takes projects like the ice rink, like the Black Sox tournament, and really, they're his own and he has a high amount of ownership with it. Um, so on Jason's behalf, if you see kids skating on the ice rink, we're gonna all start taking shifts and make sure that nobody gets on there before you're ready, um, for them, like they were today. So, um.
Courtney's starting tonight.
Yeah, I get you, boy. Um, let's see. Instrumental in providing support for the Carver Black Sox Tournament last summer. Um, and above all, you always greet people with a welcoming smile, um, quick to offer a kind word, um, and we're like, "Thank you for having you on our team." So, thank you very much. I am honored to award you the Employee of the Year Award for 2019. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'll get the ice rink. Awesome. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you for all of this.
Alright, um, then we have another Employee of the Year Award, but we are gonna hold off until Tony gets here a little bit later on. Okay. Um, good. Let's see. So, um, no public hearings tonight. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by council member Mock and a second by council member Sare. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, unfinished business, there is none. Um, let's, let's see, let's go ahead. It's okay. Should we just wanna do this first, um, unfinished business from the session at the end? Okay. Um, alright, new business, nine point one, QuickTrip Land Use and Dedication Item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're going to be reviewing a couple of things under the umbrella of the United Properties and QuickTrip Agenda item. So there's two requests before you tonight. One is review of the developers' agreement, which isn't typical, but we'll walk you through it. And the second is amending the final plat resolution for Carver Commons or the location of United Properties and QuickTrip. So you might be thinking, "Why are we looking at this developers' agreement?" This past spring, I think Larry gave a really good overview of what the development agreement or the developers' agreement is, what it does, who it holds accountable. And it's something that's included with every plating process. So any development that comes through, residential, commercial, industrial, that gets platted, has a developers' agreement that goes with it. So the developers' agreement is typically between the city and the developer and it sets expectations and requirements. So it says, "We need you to perform. If you don't, X, Y, Z will happen." So that would happen if a project goes into default or it's not completed per plan. So part of each DA, there's a set of construction drawings that essentially set our expectation. And if they aren't completed that way, the city is able to go in and finish the project, so it's complete. Typically, it's a really standard template. We go in and copy paste from several other developers' agreements that we've done. Larry kindly highlights areas that we need to change. And the city council allows us to execute that via a typical final plat resolution. So in the resolutions that you typically see, it says, "Staff has authority to execute a developers' agreement." This one's a little bit different. That's why you're seeing it tonight as a full agenda item. You'll notice if you've ever reviewed one previously, this one is longer. It has quite a bit more information and it just has some different things that aren't typical. So notable changes that are triggering the council review, first and foremost, it's a three-party agreement. So it's an agreement between the City of Carver, QuickTrip, and United Properties. So the property today is owned by United Properties. Um, we essentially did a lot split in June for Lot 1, Block 1, to allow for development for the QuickTrip. So, United Properties owns the entire piece. They're selling Lot 1, Block 1 for the QuickTrip. And then we, of course, are the third party for construction drawings. Something else that's interesting and different about this project is private streets with public infrastructure under. So, the streets will be private. So, any snow plowing will be done by either, like, similar to an HOA but for commercial, or the private property owners. But the infrastructure under the streets, so the water and sewer lines are public. Storm sewer is private. So if at any point there was an issue with, um, the water main under the street, it would be the city's responsibility to go in and fix it. This is largely, uh, an avenue to be able to loop our system effectively throughout this corner of the city. Something else that's different is ponds and pond sharing. So I'll go into the final plat, why it looks a little bit different. But there are a lot of unique features related to ponding on the site. So there are several outlets that water go to from different parties. So, like, Outlets A and C, which are along Monroe Drive, take water from Monroe Drive. Outlet E is for the development. And then you'll see in the top northeast corner, there's a new hatchout that wasn't on the original final plat that was approved. That's for a new stormwater pond that will be for the Jonathan Carver Parkway project, so county water, but also can handle some development water. Not typical that there are so many ponds with so many people feeding into them. Something else that's unique that you'll probably remember is that this project requires a temporary traffic signal. So at the time of opening, QuickTrip will need a stoplight at Monroe Drive and Jonathan Carver Parkway. Yes, it's part of the upcoming project, but it's anticipated that QuickTrip will open before that time. So they need just a temporary wood and line system instead of the full permanent system, which will go in with the full JCP project. So outlined here is where that stoplight will go. So the corner of Monroe Drive, which has previously been constructed for Meridian Fields and the United Properties piece and Jonathan Carver Parkway. So anticipate construction of the temporary stoplight spring or summer of next year. And then, I'm gonna talk through, so, in your packet, there was, um, the land, the developers' agreement memo for me, but also the city attorney. So if you have questions specific to that, we can talk, you, talk through them. That's largely the overview of just the developers' agreement. So again, not typical that you're seeing it, but there are some pretty substantial things that make it different and unique that trigger your approval. So moving into land use approval, it might feel a little bit like, "I feel like we just did this. Why are we doing this again?" when we reviewed it in June. So this, uh, the land use approval is for an amendment to the final plat resolution. So you've seen a final plat resolution for the site, but again, it essentially created Lot 1, Block 1, that was able to be sold to QuickTrip for development. So at this time, we are updating the final plat and we're tying construction drawings to it. So last time, it was just a plat. It showed the lot lines. We didn't have any information about what the site layout would be, who the user was, when I was so comfortably calling it the gas convenience user for months. Um, so at this time, we do have those construction drawings and we do have the QuickTrip specific drawings. So together with the developers' agreement and the land use approval, it puts it all together to get us to the final product. So again, I'll mention that the final plat on the left of the screen was the version that you saw in June. So there are some different changes to it. You'll see drainage and utility easements along the private streets on the property. And then the large change is the northeast corner, which is the pond that will be shared for the Jonathan Carver Parkway project, as well as the site. So, on the screen now is the rendering that was provided by QuickTrip. A change that you're seeing now is that the car wash is being removed. So, just the site minus the car wash largely stays the same. So some project-specific details. The store site has a footprint of about seventy-two-hundred square feet. There's a gas pump with ten pumps, thirty-five parking stalls, which does meet the minimum requirement for the zoning district, has an eight-style bike rack, a trash enclosure to match building, an air compressor, picnic tables, which the council discussed at a previous meeting, an electric car charger, and some significant landscaping on site. So, this is the site access plan. I'm gonna ask you not to look at it super broadly, because it might make your eyes cross. So Monroe Drive is at the bottom of the screen. There are two access points off Monroe. So the first is a slip right, so you can only turn right into the site and move into the gas pumps or fully circulator on the site. The full access point comes a bit further west, closer to Meridian Fields, which provides for both the egress and ingress for the site. So, double turn lanes to get out with the turn lane in. So this is the general flow of the site. You can see there are two access points that should allow for good site circulation, either to get to the gas pumps quickly or to the store quickly, depending on what your needs are. QuickTrip is also providing some pretty extensive landscaping throughout the site. So they've done a really nice job screening some really pivotal points, I think, of the site. There was also a lighting plan that was submitted. So, it's not anticipated that light pollution will leave the site, but I think the amount of landscaping that is provided will give it more of a feel that it's tucked into a bit of a residential area with the school directly south. So the landscape plan, again, does meet the requirements of the city code. So tonight, two actions. The developers' agreement, which Larry and I would be happy to talk you through, and then the amendment to the final plat land use approval to tie the construction drawings all together for the, uh, United Properties plans as well as QuickTrip. It's anticipated that construction of the project will begin 2020, summer 2020. And then we also are anticipating additional commercial development on the site. The site in total is about thirty acres. QuickTrip takes about two, so there's roughly twenty-ish that are probably developable, netting out streets, ponds, et cetera. So we're looking forward to additional commercial development on site. I'll open it up for questions. Members from United Properties and QuickTrip are now here. So if you have project-specific questions, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer.
Questions?
Uh, my only question is, um, do we anticipate with the Jonathan Carver Parkway expansion, any other potential changes to the site? Or are plans pretty much far down enough up a path that any major impacts, like this pond, additional pond in the northeast corner, anything else we anticipate?
So this project, along with Meridian Fields, challenged us a bit to really sit down with the county and figure out exactly what the full build-out is. So Monroe Drive and the ponding both are appropriate for the JCP project and beyond.
Okay, good. That was my only question.
Uh, when you remove the, uh, car wash, uh, with the, with the plans and layout, is it, is that permanently gone out of the plans or could that be expanded upon at a later time?
There's no date right now. It's not anticipated that the car wash will be added at this time.
Why was it removed?
So we talked about that. Uh, I spoke with Dean George with QuickTrip today. Um, we do have an ordinance that has a sixty percent reclaim requirement. And at this time, QuickTrip, um, it wasn't a deal breaker to have the project in Carver or not, but that was a deal breaker that they weren't able to accommodate. It was the sixty percent reclamation requirement that came in with Fleet Farm for the car wash. So, just a little bit different way of operating their car washes.
Do we monitor that?
I suspect someone does, but the city wouldn't be able to.
And that, that's not to say...
We have, sorry.
Sorry.
That's okay.
And I turned off that mic. If you could push it.
Red check.
Hi, thank you. Uh, I'm Dean George here on behalf of QuickTrip. Sorry for my tardiness. Um, that's not to say that we, we won't build, we can't build a car wash because of the ordinance. The ordinance is there and we, we're not set up to do that internally. So it's not like it's a city of Carver is, you know, squeezing us out of the car wash. We, we could, if we choose to make the reclaim sixty percent. We just don't internally. It's a decision we've made. So, and we would have built the store in Carver with or without the car wash.
Okay. Do you see that requirement in other cities?
Um, it varies, I think. There's, it's yes and no.
Varies that you see it or varies that the number of the reclaim that required for the reclaimed water percentage?
Both. I think we do see it and sometimes the percentage is lower, sometimes it's higher. I don't know. It's, it's, it's something that's becoming more popular, I will say.
That's all I have. And the size of the store didn't get bigger when the car wash was removed?
So, at the concept plan, the store size was around nine thousand square feet, but removing that car wash brought the total size down. So you'll see a little change in the number, but it was the reduction of the car wash.
Yeah, the, the total retail space inside the store is the same, just the total building space is different, because there's no, the car wash would have been attached to the rest of the footprint.
Undertaking motion. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolutions 162-19, amending the final plat resolution for development of Carver Commons.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by council member Mock, a second by council member Henry. Any further discussion?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Larry's got a question.
I have a question. Can, can we assume that, um, Erin and I have the authority to make minor revisions to the developers' agreement? There's a couple of issues. They don't affect the substance of it, but there's things about reserving right-of-way over easements and stuff that are still some moving targets in relation to a declaration that United Properties sent today. And if the council doesn't have any issues, we would handle this the way we normally do. We would just kind of make the revisions.
I'm comfortable that you guys are far better suited to deal with that. Does anybody else object to that?
No concern.
At all.
You have what you need from us on QuickTrip.
Is there a second motion to execute the developers' agreement?
I would request a motion to approve the developers' agreement, subject to such minor revisions as Erin, Brent, and I deem appropriate.
Well said, Larry. I would like to make a motion for that and that. We're not gonna play this game. We did this last meeting.
I will, I will second the motion.
We once again have a motion by council member Mock and a second by council member Henry. Any further discussion?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright.
Bring the QuickTrip to town.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Very excited.
So are we. Banana deal.
Alright, um, item nine point two, the Park Master Plan and Park Dedication Ordinance, Ms. Smith.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is, uh, I think, a really exciting night for me personally, but also the Parks Commission. Uh, we've been working really hard on the Parks Master Plan. So the requests tonight are to do final review of the Parks Master Plan and then the, uh, proposed changes to the Park Dedication Ordinance. I'll talk you through all of that. So, I think it's so exciting, because this process began a long time ago. So, in 2017, Landform was hired to work with the Parks Commission to develop the Parks Master Plan. Uh, the Parks Commission took a little bit of a breather after they did some, um, a full inventory of the parks. At that time, uh, there was a bit of a lull in the plan and it really got revived in 2019 when we began in earnest on the Park Dedication Plan. The Parks Commission, again, worked really hard. They recommended approval of and adoption of the plan at their October fourteenth meeting, which was exciting. And then the Planning Commission also requires review of the ordinance. So if you think about the fee schedule, there are certain fees that are tied to planning and zoning that the Planning Commission does a review of. They make sure that things are in line with other cities, the way that development is trending. And they're required to hold the public hearing for the ordinance. So that was done at the November twenty-first Planning Commission meeting. So, both Parks Commission and Planning Commission have seen it. The Planning Commission doesn't have a role of reviewing the Parks, uh, Master Plan for substance, but it was tricky not to with some of the pretty graphics that were included. So everyone, uh, generally was really excited. It was Cindy Monroe was our chair that night and she pretty constantly needed to remind us that we were only reviewing the fees, because we all got really excited together to talk about it. and she pretty constantly needed to remind us that we were only reviewing the fees because we all got really excited together to talk about it. So some of the shining beautiful images that are included in the plan include some development of parks that we've been thinking about for a couple of years and zeroing in on them a little bit. The first that we'll talk about is development of a park downtown. This considers demolition of a public utilities building that is directly next to Church by the River. You'll see Church by the River. That's on the map there. This, this plan shows a splash pad. Something that was really important to the Parks Commission was making sure that we kept the HPC or the Historic Preservation Commission in mind, knowing that this is part of our historic downtown. So how can we honor our history but also provide for some new park amenities in town? So something that's changed pretty significantly is the building that's on site. The original was pretty modern. Was largely like cedar with a black roof, so we changed the design of the building a little bit to fit in with the community a bit more. So things that the Park Downtown has is the splash pad. The rock area is to pay some homage to the Carver Rapids. The bridge is a replica of the Trestle Bridge that was in town, so adding some of those community features. Something else that is exciting is that the parking area can double, both for parking, but also can be opened up for some different recreation opportunities, whether that be food trucks or a farmer's market, just to add some livelihood to this part of downtown. So some really great features that are included that we think tie in both the historic downtown as well as create new recreation opportunities.
Erin, can I ask you one question?
Yeah.
Can you flip back to the previous slide?
Sure.
So we had talked about the shelter-
Yeah.
-and it being in the historic downtown, and so I, this looks much better. My only question with this is, the other one had a space to, you know, have picnic tables and things like that. This looks totally enclosed. Am I wrong?
So there are picnic tables. I don't know if I included the overview. There are picnic tables in the plan, and something to note is that this is just a rendering.
Sure.
So if we went out for construction, it probably wouldn't look like this.
What I'm seeing is covered, though.
Oh, sure.
So the, there aren't any covered ones in this plan at this point.
And that would be a great opportunity potentially to do like a sun shade somewhere, just to offer some space for families that, if they have young kids, but that's a great idea.
I realize this is-
Yeah.
-conceptual, but thank you.
Sure. The next park that we worked on is a park south of town. So the street to the north is Maplewood Road. This is in Doll Grand Township, so not in current city limits. But this allowed the Parks Commission to dream pretty big, since it's just a big open field, thinking about what they wanted, what they hear from people in the community. So something that we hear pretty often is that we need some more space for fields. So it can be a mix of T-ball, baseball, softball. Something else that the Parks Commission felt really passionately about was a nature-based playground, which is a really cool idea to allow kids to play more creatively than a typical play structure. This park also includes that, a more traditional slide swing set. There's also multi-use courts, as well as several areas for expansion in this park. So day one for this park is probably the city entering into a purchase agreement, and then we start landscaping pretty extensively. So this park will be fantastic, but if we get down there and start doing construction of a ballfield and landscaping at the same time, the landscaping feels pretty irrelevant for a while, just because it takes saplings a while to grow. This park also has a pretty extensive trail system, so it'd allow people to have their kids playing baseball, softball, T-ball, but also enjoy some amenities if they don't want to stick around for every game. Sorry, that was maybe harsh. This park also contemplates some additional fields, so moving forward, should this park like to expand, we believe that there's some opportunity to add three additional fields. Something that was important for this park, obviously, was pretty flat land to be able to accommodate all of these park, all of these fields. So again, south of town, not in city limits, largely a phased park, so the, there's different shading, which is probably easier to see on a computer or printed piece of paper. But not everything happens day one, just because we don't have all the money in the world, unfortunately, and some of these projects are large. The third park that's contemplated is at the corner of Jonathan Carver Parkway and County Road forty, so currently being used as a public utility storage site. So we, we've identified this site as being something interesting that's largely underutilized. Something that we've heard from the community a lot is the desire for a dog park. So this became a pretty natural fit for it, since it will largely be a yardway site along with some public utility storage, because those largely aren't bothered by barking dogs. So there is space both for large dogs, small dogs. Something that we took into consideration after seeing the concept was expanding both of those. So if you'll recall, the original plan had a pretty large loop in the street that we took out to accommodate larger dog park areas for both the large and small. Another comment that we received is the desire to have a trail that goes through the site. So you'll see that it extends past where the current property line is. We've also explored what it looks like to get this trail to connect downtown, so something that we'll continue working on with the Parks Commission. Also includes Frisbee Golf Course with the opportunity to potentially expand in the future, should we acquire property east, but right now a nine-hole course. So those were the flashy images, but I also want to highlight things that are in the plan that weren't, we don't have the renderings for, just because there is so much more than these three large parks. We also accommodate some redevelopment of parks that we have. So the Gaystock Lake area, that will be our first recreational lake in the city, so thinking about that differently. What would that look like, should we acquire property for a park? The Mueller Site redevelopment, we're not sure when it's going to happen, but something that's in our comp plan is redevelopment of that site. Again, opportunity for water access of some type of lake potentially. There's a green ribbon trail system, which largely is a connector for development trail. The Parks Master Plan does not negate the fact that developers still need to put trails into a development, but it's largely for connections and then areas that we identify as being important trail corridors. So if you think about the Sawing Property, the Timber Creek section is really interesting and unique. Largely will probably fall to the city for ownership, but is it possible that we get a trail through there that could connect further west than we are right now? It also includes the underpass for the JCP project, Olson Park, which was part of Copper Hills. It contemplates a multi-use court. There's some additional space there. Ironwood Park considers a pavilion and outdoor games. And then Community Park, should the park south of town develop into the beautiful photo that it is in the plan, there's some opportunity for redevelopment there, since the fields will no longer be needed. The challenges for that site, obviously, are the XL power line, so how can we use that site a little differently, knowing the restrictions that we have, but potentially opening it up a bit? We also contemplated adding some tables to gazebo park downtown. So all of this ties into park dedication. So moving from the Parks Master Plan into some of the ordinance work that we need to consider tonight. So how park dedication works out with this plan is that we take the total number of dollars that we think is anticipated to be spent on these parks from 2040. So from today, should the plan be adopted to 2040, these are the anticipated costs we see for everything that's in the plan. We then take the comp plan numbers to determine the mix and the type of development. So for the 2040 plan, there is a pretty even split of eighty-five percent is determined to be residential and fifteen, commercial and industrial. So remember those two numbers. At that point, we divide the total park improvement, which is roughly eighteen million dollars, by the development numbers, and you get the park dedication fee. So I'm going to walk through each one because that was a lot of information. So residential, it's per unit. So every building permit that comes in is required to pay this fee. So you take the eighteen point seven million dollars times point eight five, which is eighty-five percent of future development, divided by three thousand nine hundred and twelve, which is the number of units we anticipate in the future, to get that total number of four thousand seventy dollars. So the current fee is three thousand nine hundred and twenty, so an increase of one hundred and fifty dollars. Commercial is a little different. Don't think per unit, think per acre. So you take the, again, eighteen point seven times point one five, which is the percentage, divided by nine hundred and twenty-seven, which is the potential acreage of commercial and industrial development we see. So the current fee is three thousand two hundred and twenty-four. It's actually getting reduced by one hundred ninety-seven dollars, ninety-four dollars, to three thousand thirty dollars per acre. This largely is because for the 2030 plan, which set the previous park dedication fee, it was a smaller area, so there was a higher concentration of commercial and industrial development in that area. We've expanded now. There's more space. There's less of a concentration of commercial and industrial. Does that make sense? Okay. And then finally is the city's contribution. So annually, the city does contribute to the park dedication fee. So we felt it was appropriate to take the change in the residential fee, which is three point eight percent, or that moving to the four thousand seventy dollars, to apply that to the park dedication fee. So currently, it's around seventeen thousand dollars proposed. It goes to about seventeen five, a change of six hundred and forty-five dollars per year. So that falls to the ordinance, which lives in our subdivision section of our code, so it's the public land dedication. So the current park dedication ordinance has two fees. So it's community park fees and neighborhood park fees, which the proposed ordinance just moves to the one, the community park fee. This is a little bit tricky when developers come in and look at the fee schedule, because they think they only owe one of the fees. So they often start to do some numbers without checking with staff to say, hang on, you owe us both of the fees. So hopefully, moving to one will help alleviate some of that confusion. Also, we're moving away a bit from the neighborhood park idea, or those pocket parks that are in each park, to the community scale. So again, the Planning Commission reviewed, had the public hearing. There was no one that spoke at the public hearing, passed unanimously on a five to zero vote. Something else that changes in the ordinance is that it references the updated plan. So obviously, with a new plan being adopted, there's just some language tweaks that need to be done. And it also includes trail construction as part of the community park fee. So again, that was broken out. So this essentially puts them all together into one fee that allows us to use the dollars on community parks or trails. So the next steps for the Parks Master Plan, the Parks Commission will begin work with direction on the master plan. So it was a long process, but we got to this point. But now what do we do with it? How do we take this plan and apply it? What's our first move, essentially? And then the park dedication fee, should be, should it be adopted tonight, will be effective January twenty twenty. So should any building permit come in after the first of the year, the new fee will apply. The Parks Master Plan also includes a new caveat that review begins in 2022. So instead of reviewing with just the comp plan, it will be the Parks Commission's role to review in 2022, just to say, hey, is this still where we want to be heading? Do we have some check-in points that we need to be reaching by then? So again, there's two actions for this project, the Parks Master Plan adoption and then the update to the public land dedication ordinance. I will open it up for questions.
Questions?
Nope. I have a couple of questions. My computer's, you know, slow on the wifi right now. When you're, page three twenty-two of the packet, not the Park Master Plan, but of the actual packet, there's a listing there of what park amenities are. Just getting back to that page myself. So I was looking at Carver Bluffs, and these are kind of minor tweaks, but I think we, you can let me know if I, my memory is somehow off. But Carver Bluffs Park, it says there includes soccer fields and playground equipment. There's a, there's a soccer field, softball field, shelter. Was there playground equipment put in there? I don't recall that there is any there.
Are you in like the land form?
Yes, she's under the existing condition section. Second page of that, it's page eight.
Page eight of the master plan packet, three twenty-two of the council packet.
No, you're correct. There's no playground. It's in different parts.
Yeah, it's the, it's the association one.
HOAs, yeah.
Okay, there's-
It includes soccer fields and shelter.
Right.
And the softball field. Because that's not listed either.
Yes.
And then when I was looking at the Riverside Park map, and again, my, sorry, my computer's being kind of slow here. And you were noting what we had currently. So it notes that there's three campsites. I believe there's still four. And then for the boat launch, I didn't see that it noted that. Is something, is that something that we should be noting that belongs in Riverside Park? I mean, that's not- I just didn't know if there was a reason that you had left it out or if we just didn't make it in.
And I can't speak to these necessarily. Landform put them together, but it's something we can definitely take a finer tooth comb, knowing what we know at this level instead.
Okay, so yeah, if you could update those two.
Yeah.
The trail from the dog park down at, by the Carver Bluffs, I'm not sure, or I don't, I won't use the term I use for that.
Thank you.
That trail initially, though, was intended to lead to Carver Bluffs Park. Is that correct?
That's a goal, yes.
Okay, okay. I didn't see that there was money set aside in this plan or money earmarks that we were going to put towards that trail. Is there a reason that we haven't included that?
So we don't own the property directly east of it. That would make the connection.
Okay.
So should we acquire that property? That's definitely something we could think about.
Okay, so we won't stub up to that other property if we're not, if we don't have rights to it all the way through, basically?
I would like to say we would do those together, just so then we can make some informed decisions about where the trail stops.
Okay. And then my final question is, for gazebo park, it says there will be four tables and a cement pad, and there's a price tag of sixty-five thousand dollars. Tell me what I'm missing. That seems like an awful lot of money for a cement pad and four picnic tables.
So the tables that we were spec-ing out are expensive, so if you think about them, they're not typical, like your typical wood, just because we need them to last a bit longer. Also, concrete's pretty expensive. If Brian wants to give you specifics, but that largely was the price tag that I was reaching with doing the concrete and four tables.
So looking at the aesthetics of that park, the way it is now, we have a wood gazebo. And we are in the historic district, so the fees may be fine, because as we build out or when this happens, we may need them. But I would strongly suggest that we take a different look at what we put down there, especially for a price tag like that.
Sure.
And something that looks a little bit more aesthetically matching in that park.
Agreed.
Okay. That's all I have for that. From me, first of all, I, and I'll thank them myself, but this, this was a huge lift. This is a lot, there's a lot of information in here. It was a lot to read. It had to have been a tremendous amount of work putting it together. And it's worth noting that the Parks Commission are exclusively volunteers. They're donating their Tuesday nights, Monday nights?
Monday nights.
Monday nights, you know.
Yeah.
To participating in this. And so a huge thank you to them for that. I, as you can probably guess, was thrilled to see a mention of future sledding hills in here, because that's something, that's a drum that I've been beating for a long time. Long time. I would love to see and talk to Brent a little bit about this, like now that we have this plan, let's execute. Let's get this done. We've got the money. You know, let's start. And that's a little bit further down that, you know, I don't know who provides that direction. I'm fine if it's the Parks Commission saying, okay, we decided we need to get going on, you know, and I know that there's some overlap if it's the downtown area, but let's, let's get going on this and let's see some movement on this in the next year. But I think it's really great and really thoughtful, well-planned out, really good job.
Thank you.
And also thanks for walking through the math, because-
You know, this is like the one time I felt really confident in math.
Math is great.
So it was really good, actually. Till those people left, I guess they weren't so into it.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution one sixty-three dash nineteen, approving the Parks Master Plan.
I'll second that. Great. We have a motion by Councilmember Sayer and a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance zero one dash two thousand nineteen, updating the public land dedication ordinance.
I'll second that. We have another motion by Councilmember Sayer and a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, nine point three, the 2020 Fee Schedule Ordinance, Ms. Sands-Eiden.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, each fall, the staff reviews the various fees that are charged by the city and recommends changes necessary for the following year. At this time, those recommendations are being presented to the City Council for consideration of adoption this evening. The fee schedule in your packet this evening reflects the proposed changes, noted in red and highlighted in yellow. Those changes are mainly as follows. We did some wording and note changes, just to make some clarifications on a couple of the fees. Some miscellaneous fees were added specifically for the transfer of a gravesite, which was an administrative fee, and then for field lighting, since we now have lights on our fields, at least some of them. The water meter fees have been adjusted to reflect annual costs, or, I'm sorry, actual costs, including the size of the meter, the MXU, the meter horn, and then other associated parts the city now supplies in the form of a kit. And then last, there are the park dedication fees, which Erin already spoke to. These changes are in the planning and zoning section. These fees were last updated in two thousand and nine with the adoption of the Park Dedication Study. Residential park dedication fees are moving, as Erin mentioned, from two fees paid with each permit, the neighborhood park and community park, to now one fee for community park funding only. The change comes from a desire within the Parks Commission- The change comes from a desire within the Parks Commission to work toward larger scale, community-based parks as opposed to pocket parks that were often found in each development. Moving to one community park fee will also reduce confusion for developers, but if they were required to pay one fee or both fees when they were considering a project in Carver. And then last, I wanted to note that in order to obtain a more detailed account of future infrastructure costs, specifically the twenty twenty-one water treatment plant, which we discussed earlier this evening, all rates and charges associated with water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater will be addressed in the spring of twenty twenty. So the schedule that we were looking at, as you know, on November fourth, we reviewed the draft of this particular fee schedule. November fourth, twenty nineteen. November twenty-first, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on fees relating, relating to the park dedication fees. And as Erin already mentioned this evening, they did recommend approval to the city council and that was a unanimous recommendation. And then therefore tonight, if the ordinance is approved, it would be published and those fees would take effect January one of twenty twenty. That being said, I would open it up to any further questions and then after that, the, uh, motion would be up for consideration of adoption.
Questions?
No, cause everything's been in line with everything we've already discussed.
Yeah.
Yep.
I do have one question and it just for peace of mind, so I understand it. When we're looking at the fire protection and rescue, it says illegal intentional fires, then it says see below. Is that what the charges are that come under truck deployment charges below that? Maybe Callie, I should be asking you to. So just under fire protection and rescue, it's saying if you, the truck deployment charges, engine with crew, four hundred and fifty dollars the first hour. Um, and I'm just trying to make sure, is that every time a truck gets called out to like a house fire? Or is that part of that C below for an intentional illegal fire?
No, that would be for an illegal fire. So sometimes somebody says intentionally, um, that cat out of the corner, burning illegal materials, things like that.
Okay, so it's not that we're charging.
We don't charge for basic fire services, only if they did something illegal.
Okay.
Causes a fire instead.
Okay, great, that's all I needed. All right.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance ten dash twenty nineteen, amending certain fees charged by the city.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by council member Mock and a second by council member Henry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Um, with that, should we do the award? Okay. Um, sorry. All right, going back to the Employee of the Year Award. Um, so we said earlier that we have two, one for full-time and one for part-time. Our part-time, um, employee of the year, although I'll argue that much like our roles, the folks on the fire department are way more than what you think of as part-time. Um, Toni served on our fire department for five years. Um, in addition to her regular duties, she also serves as the department's secretary. Um, on the nomination of Toni, it stated that Toni is a fantastic firefighter in the fire department. She is always looking for ways for the department to improve. She manages and organizes all the community events for the fire department. Some of those include, some of those events include the safety fair, the vehicle fair, national night out, and the annual fall open house. Um, Toni is truly dedicated to serving the people of Carver and she's a great addition to the fire department. Um, and just to kind of add to what was said in the nomination, Toni's the one who's always making sure that I'm invited to the community events and getting to participate in the, the third graders event where the folks from Carver Elementary and East Union came out was an absolute blast. Um, and there's a lot of organization that goes into that kind of stuff in the open house. And she is the brains in the organization behind a lot of those events. So, um, congratulations Toni. It is my honor to award you the twenty nineteen Employee of the Year Award. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. That's so fun.
We'll be in the same spot.
It's just. Do you want any family pics?
These are behind you.
Everybody on families.
Yeah.
Uh, doesn't matter.
Yeah, totally. Yeah, come on, everybody's setting, come on, come on. Oh, they love it.
They're happy there. They came from the orchestra concerts. And I had my fire shirt in the car, but I forgot to put it on.
It's okay, it's okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mom of the Year and Employee.
Congratulations Toni.
All right, so let's see. That brings us to the twenty twenty final levy and budget. Mr. Merrick.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. So, uh, tonight kind of wraps up the twenty twenty, uh, budget season, which started off in May of this past year. Um, the council had a series of work sessions, uh, staff met multiple times to go over drafts. And just recently at your December second meeting, the council held its annual truth and taxation public hearing. Um, we have a, a bunch of different materials in the packet related to the truth and taxation summary. I'm foregoing that if you want to go over that. Um, again, we can tonight, um, but before you tonight are two resolutions. One, adopting the twenty twenty property tax levy in the amount of three million thirty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, that's resolution one sixty dash nineteen. And then your second resolution, should you choose to adopt it, is resolution one sixty-one nineteen, approving the twenty twenty budget. That's for the general fund and debt service fund and all the enterprise funds. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
The one thing too, that I think is worth noting is that this year we did things a little bit differently and that we had the truth and taxation one week, um, at our first meeting in December and then we did, now we're entertaining, um, the adoption and approval of the twenty twenty budget. Um, and Brent's idea to separate them out so that if there was any feedback, we could go back. Fortunately, or fortunately, we didn't get any in, any feedback folks in that time period, so. That I entertain a motion?
Made a whole lot of motions tonight already.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve resolution one sixty dash nineteen, certifying the twenty twenty property tax levy in the amount of three million thirty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by council member McKnight and a second by council member Henry. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Motion carries.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve resolution one sixty-one dash nineteen, approving the twenty twenty budget.
I'll second.
We have a motion by council member McKnight and a second by council member Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Great work.
Yes.
Well.
Um, moving on to twenty twenty police services agreement, Mr. Merrick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Now that you've adopted the twenty twenty budget, uh, it's time to consider law enforcement services or police services for twenty twenty. Uh, as you know, the city contracts with Carver County, the Carver County Sheriff's Office, um, for law enforcement coverage. Uh, the city has previously been operating with what's been known as the town cop, uh, which is Katie Sandberg, Deputy Katie Sandberg for the city, who primarily works at kind of an eight to four-thirty and that flexes based on morning need and afternoon need throughout the, throughout the month. Um, over the last several years, the city has had a split shift, uh, for evening coverage with Lake Town Township where we've covered point six-five of that, uh, shift and Lake Town Township has covered the other point three-five, meaning of that full-time position where they've rotated, uh, their patrol, patrol between Lake Town and the city of Carver. Uh, Lake Town has, has ceased that, um, contract coverage. And so for twenty twenty, the council was faced with the concept of either adding that point three-five as a kind of a a whole full-time position for evening coverage or decreasing coverage. So this past fall, Sheriff Jason Camerut and Commander Mike Wolleneen, uh, went over that patrol change as well as some other trends that they're seeing in the city as it relates to law enforcement. Um, one of the things that you'll see within the contract as a cost-saving measure is time allocated uh, for the community service officer was removed from the twenty twenty contract. And those duties will be assigned to the deputy, uh, that we have in service. So such, typically those calls are related to animal control calls, maybe some noise calls, et cetera. Um, as you can see, the different cost difference between, uh, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, uh, the contract in twenty nineteen was a hundred and ninety-seven thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, the contract for twenty twenty is two hundred and thirty-nine thousand three hundred and eight. So that's the additional deputy, but also the increased prorated share, uh, for the squad vehicle. And as I mentioned previously, the, these costs are included in the twenty twenty budget. So happy to answer any questions.
I think it's good to reiterate too, that when we're saying that we would have decreased coverage, we literally had to either go with the full-time evening or we would have had no evening coverage, period.
Correct.
So, um, I, I liked our other model, but it's not available any longer.
Right. We would like coverage.
So I'll make a motion to enter into a contract for police services with the Carver County Sheriff's Office.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by council member Mock and a second by council member Henry. Any further discussion?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right, uh, moving on to nine point six, the humane pet store ordinance, Mr. Merrick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At your December second meeting, uh, the Humane Society of the United States requested the city council consider uh, the adoption of a humane pet store ordinance. Uh, representatives from the HSUS advocated for the ordinance that primarily, uh, regulates the sale of animals, uh, requires a display of certificate of source, and also subjects pet stores to inspections to ensure compliance. Uh, the ci- city of Eden Prairie, um, has recently adopt, adopted a similar ordinance. And so, uh, the council requested this be brought back to a future meeting to discuss, uh, options and work direction for staff. And so we've laid out a general three options, but there probably are more if you want those considered. Uh, the first one would be, uh, by motion to direct staff, uh, to prepare a ordinance similar to the city of Eden Prairies. Uh, the second would be, uh, to provide that same type of direction, but provide some specific notes or, uh, items that you wanted us, um, to get after as far as expectations, tweaks that you want to make that would be helpful for the, uh, city attorney to know prior to, um, drafting such an ordinance. Or, uh, you can essentially let the, um, issue kind of die on the vine and take no action. Uh, say, so you wouldn't take a, make a motion and you'd just say at this point, uh, in essence would signify that you're not interested in, in taking action at this time. You don't need to make a motion to affirm that you don't want to do anything. So, um, attach in your packet is a copy of the ci- uh, city of Eden Prairies ordinance. Uh, be happy to take any questions.
So, um, I just wanted to mention that, uh, the group who was here, who, uh, presented to us on December second, they are here if we have any further questions for them. Um, I just wanted to have, say a couple of comments here about this. I know that when we talked about it at the last meeting, there were, um, a few different concerns. Obviously, we were looking at the city of Eden Prairies, um, um, ordinance for it, which may not be what necessarily fits ours. Um, I do think that this is, is an important ordinance. I think we have to, if no one, if we don't protect our, um, our animals and our, or things like that, who will? Um, it's, it's, I know that I heard comments about, well, it should be maybe done at the state level or at this level, but also grass, grassroots levels are great too. If no one does it, then no one's doing it. Um, I think having animals that are sourced responsibly and that basically kept in what equates to a concentration camp their entire life in order, so that we can have maybe sick or malbehaved dogs, um, or cats that we, that we purchase. Um, one thing I like about this is that we don't have a pet store here right now. We're not fighting something that's already in place and trying to fight this, we're being proactive about it. Um, I know there were a couple of comments too about the enforcement part of it. You know what, we've got these two officers now, so I think we can certainly have people stop by. I'm not sure what the enforcement part looks like. I know that that's going to be something that's kind of difficult, um, to comprehend as to the process, but.
Can I just interrupt? I don't think that the police department does code enforcement and that kind of thing, so just to clarify.
Yes.
Well, who would?
Well, enforcement again, we get people.
Not the police department.
Who's the weed inspector? Can we add this on?
If the council wants to move forward, we'll, we'll figure out how to do enforcement for you.
So, being a little bit, um, you know, being a little snide here about this, but I, I, to me, it's important. I'd like to see what an ordinance looks like and at that point, we can decide whether it fits for us or doesn't fit for us. Again, I think that this is an appropriate time because it's proactive rather than reactive. We're not trying to go in and shut somebody down, but I think the welfare of our animals and, um, and how they're treated and how we, we come about them is actually important because again, if we don't protect them, who does?
Yeah, I'll, you know, I'll second your comment. I think that a grassroots effort is warranted here, right? It's an important issue. Um, you know, and I mean, the city has plenty of ordinances around other types of businesses. It's not like we don't regulate certain things, um, within our city. So I think it's certainly within scope, so, um, I'd like to see a humane pet store ordinance come back to us. It's my thought.
Well, I don't have a dog in the fight. But, um.
Were you waiting to use?
Yeah, he was.
Yes, I was.
Make a comment before I get the rap signal from Brett.
It's, I, I don't care. It's, it's a really non-issue to me. I think every pet owner primarily takes care of their pets well. Um, but where they come from, um, I don't. Most people will seek out a reputable breeder, most people do. And that being said, I mean, I've got, we had two cats from the, uh, the Humane Society, so we used them. But realistically, I'm, I'm on the fence with this one, it doesn't matter. Whatever council, I'm just one of them.
I'm at a spot where I don't have an interest in moving forward.
Well, there you go, Courtney.
Right.
Do you want a dog ear then? Um. No more.
You know, I think that this is a little bit early to do this. I don't know, I feel like this is just a little bit too in the weeds. I don't know that we need to make an ordinance for everything. Um, and especially when we don't have a pet store humane or otherwise on the horizon coming into the city. So my vote is no for this.
So.
At that point, it would be too late though. If you have them coming in, you can't regulate after they're here.
Right, sorry, Joy. So, I mean, so, uh, sorry to interrupt, but so what we could do is we could, I think, instead of having an ordinance, we could have a conditional use permit. So if a pet store comes into the city at that time, we can address this. No? Okay, sorry. Please correct me, please correct me.
You use conditional land.
Oh, I'm sorry, you use a conditional use permit to regulate land uses? This is, uh, this is a procedural process issue and a business regulation.
Okay.
So we've gone under the police power of the code. I mean, y- you can, I believe you can adopt an ordinance along the lines of what Eden Prairie did under the police powers of the city, but you, I don't think you can do it under land use. I wouldn't recommend doing it under land use.
Okay, okay.
Do you have any more decisive ones?
No. But you'd like to see one.
I would like to see it one come back for review, I would. I mean, again, at that point, we can make choices, but I think one that was drafted to fit the city of Carver would be nice to consider.
Go ahead and log into it, Brett.
Okay, that's not how it works. That's not how it works. So we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to direct staff to prepare a humane pet store ordinance modeling the ordinance adopted by the city of Eden Prairie.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by council member Mock and a second by council member McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. Nay.
So roll call, council, council member Henry?
Aye.
Council member Mock?
Aye.
Council member Sayer?
Nay.
Council member McKnight?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Nay. Um, so the motion passes. On to the two items, um, that we didn't get to from.
Oh, yeah.
The work session. Um, I will call nine point seven, the communication franchise ordinance slash fees, Mr. Merrick.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, um, So in your packet is a draft of a insert that we put into the city newsletter in January to talk about franchise fees and the related street maintenance that could potentially be used from the revenue generation. And we're looking at this in in terms of the insert would be, in essence, an invitation to to go to the website to get at kind of the real heavy details of franchise fees and street maintenance. But with enough information that if you chose to just use that as your single source for information, you could do so and use that in a way to communicate your.
I'm sorry, what page in the packet? We're backing way up here.
Forty.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Okay, thank you.
Forty-eight. And so the the idea would be to model it after what the city used for the city hall listening session. So this is culminating to a listening session on during your January twenty-first, January twenty-first work session. We give an overview of franchise fees, talk about the process, and then invite residents and business owners or anybody that's impacted, property owners, et cetera, to come and share their views. I would read written submissions that were submitted either through Facebook or Twitter, the city, my email, et cetera. And then really have that be kind of the next milestone step for the city council then to direct the city attorney. There's a number of steps that the city has to take as far as noticing a utility companies, et cetera. And so the council asked to move forward with the work plan. So tonight, we're just presenting you with this insert. And if there are significant changes or the approach, you're not feeling comfortable with the approach, we wanted to get that feedback before we get that out, understanding that as well as staff, that the council, whether it's in person or via an email or phone call, will be asked these questions. So we wanted to get you comfortable with the materials in advance.
So I.
Comments?
The feedback that I gave Brett earlier was that I really like this format. It's pretty simple. I like that specifically we're naming roads that are upcoming for maintenance because I think that really puts it in people's minds, right? I drive on these roads. I see the conditions. I see that they'll need to be replaced. So I like that concreteness of it, of how it applies in our city. I also like the map of our neighboring communities and how much they're pulling in from franchise fees for their individual projects. I thought that was also really helpful in kind of giving the big picture. This is about the big picture, this communication, so that we can then get into some of the nitty-gritty details in that listening session. So I liked the simplicity of the format, the touch point with the community and the sort of big picture with the surrounding communities.
When it says twenty-one, when we have twenty-one miles, is that, is that what we're going to have when developments that are going in now? Does that include that? Or will those miles be going up? Do we have all the roads in for the developments that we have?
Some of them.
Okay. I'm not sure who who needs to get the road.
The newest ones aren't, but like, for example, like the old tree ones, I think are in there.
Okay.
Some of the newest ones, like maybe like Greenfield Second, wouldn't be like. It encompasses most of them, for sure.
Okay. I only ask because I think that if we are anticipating that these roads are going to be finished within the first timeframe of if this were to be approved. I'm not sure how to reference that, but if it's more than twenty-one or it's going to be more than twenty-one, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I just want as accurate of numbers on there as possible. I wonder if we don't say over twenty miles? Because I don't know that there's going to be a single resident out there driving the streets and saying, oh, we're at twenty-two when you said twenty-one. But I'm saying, if we have thirty miles coming in, then it might, then we should know that if it's going to be within the next year. Not thirty miles coming in, but thirty miles total.
Except that's not, just like doubles advocate, that's the new roads that come in are what we are worried about.
True, right.
Going to be the recipients of these funds because they'll be new and shiny.
Sure enough. Yep, good point.
Yeah.
So just taking a half a step back, I had coffee with Mayor Ryan from Chan Hassen last week. And this kind of thing is what was one of her biggest takeaways. Her recommendation was to over-communicate. She referenced their Facebook page, the website, process meeting, listening sessions. They put an at in the Chan Hassen Villager just to make sure that folks were aware of this. And there were no optics of, they slipped it through. This was, you know, something that happened in the middle of the night kind of thing.
Yeah.
Over-communicate, don't be in a rush for a decision. She said it was really important that they had a five-year plan where they were able to ID the projects. They're dealing in significantly larger numbers than we are here.
Sure.
So, you know, as you can see, their franchise fee revenue alone is.
Twenty-seven million.
So what we're spending every year, you know, in the city.
Total.
Total in our city. Total versus like what we're looking at here. So it's a little, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. But she said really having that plan was also very key. And we talked about that a little bit at our last meeting about how we can't just say, oh, we need this money.
Right.
But we may use it for this, we may use it for that. So do you think, can I just stop you there? Do you think, you know, I know Brian presented a nice, some nice data earlier. We had discussions about road maintenance, about here's all of our sort of our road inventory. Here's how old they are. Here's kind of how many miles are going to need to be replaced each year. Is that the kind of detailed plan that you think that would meet that requirement? I think so. And it's something really clear that says, you know, if we start collecting these franchise fees in, you know, by May, you know, that in twenty twenty-one, we will mill and overlay Street A, B, and C. And the following year, it goes to D, E, and F.
Yeah, okay.
That is really prescriptive. And with the understanding that if we have a bad winter or the traffic is bad on Street N, that we move that up a little bit, you know? But just so that there is a plan and a direction and something that, you know, really folks can take a look at and be like, oh, I'm on L Street. We're looking at twenty twenty-six, you know?
Right.
So just having an idea of where this goes to. The rest of my feed, yeah.
Hey, just make one comment on that. So we can, we can provide a basic kind of a spreadsheet format related to that. But one difference you'll see between where we're at and where Chan Hassen was or is is that they did a complete pavement management plan. And that's the thirty thousand dollar price tag to have bolted and make. And we will, we're planning on doing that, but we're not in that space now. So if that's something that the council wants to do in advance of this, rather than having what I'd call, in essence, a table that would show up a plan, we can do that. That'll just change some of our timing.
For me, I, like, where I'm going with this is going to end up in a chicken and the egg kind of conversation. But I think, you know, we have that table that you shared with us that was in the last packet that identified West Sixth Street, Kirchi, the streets in the Bluffs.
Yep.
You know, I would imagine that it's one of those things that's going to be a complete cycle that once those streets are taken care of, and say that takes a handful of years, there will be other streets where there will be needs identified. So, you know, because part of the story is going to be that we need to keep maintaining these streets. I think I would like to go and borrow that route of a pavement management plan and do that upfront. Although now that I'm totally just thinking out loud, wondering how we're going to pay for that. Because again, that's kind of part of telling the story and explaining this to residents is, okay, so these streets are going to take five years, then where does somebody go in the sixth year and beyond?
So I feel a little bit differently, though, because.
And I'm thinking out loud, so I'm right.
Yeah, this is actually work session right now.
It's work session, we're back in work session.
So Brian, you've already run out of time.
Extra comments?
Gilly, gilly.
So we've already identified, we are in step one, right? You've identified the streets right now that would need to be redone. Yes.
Yes.
So if you look at the size of Chan Hassen, I'm not saying that we won't end up needing this pavement management plan. We are still fairly small. So to take that amount of money to have this plan, because Brett, can you tell me what that number is again?
We figure like thirty thousand.
Okay, I'd rather have Brian say this street is bad in our twenty-one thing and put thirty thousand dollars towards the street rather than this management plan sometime in the future, yes. I think right now with the size of our town, with you being here and have already identified that I think we can do this rolling once Kirchi's done or whatever the first one is, you add one on to the bottom and it becomes the list. So I think for our size, I'm good with that. I'd rather turn the thirty grand back into doing some actual work.
Yeah, I support that too. I think Brian would have the authority and just, you're out there, your crew's out there, you know our streets, just to come up with kind of our own internal master plan, knowing that we would need to have flexibility for if you see a dramatic change. But just to tell a story so that it's not where, oh, squeaky wheel gets their road fixed playing favorites or, you know, there's a perception that this needs to be fixed. But I would like to see just kind of more internal.
Yeah.
Pavement management plan. And I do have some feedback on the flyer thing too.
Yeah, I do too. I'm getting there. So I I can support that. I do think that the, an easily anticipated question when we kind of start taking this out to the public and on the road show will be, what happens in year six? You know, if we have just a five-year plan. I don't know, with the streets that we have right now, is that five years?
But I think what we we would do, we would operate it similar to our capital improvement program. So we'll have a five-year plan.
Yeah.
And then every year, we'll add another year to the bottom and we'll keep planning that out. There are, and I'm not probably the biggest advocate for pavement management plans probably to begin with. I know they're needed, but it's not, you know, in my wheelhouse. I I do think we have a comprehensive plan for doing the street maintenance. I was just trying, attempting to point out that we don't have a pavement management plan. And so if I don't want to put the council in a position where you think that we have a pavement management plan when we actually don't and having that expectation. But I do think our, we have a pretty extensive layout of what our street needs are. It's just not in what I'd say is a common format of a pavement management plan that a city with maybe more resources and more easily fund than we can.
Is there a different term for it or just like a list of priorities or?
We can call it our, our street maintenance, CIP.
Schedule, yeah. See.
I I like your analogy to the capital improvement plan, just like we plan for vehicles and all of those sorts of things from a replacement standpoint, all of those capital needs, we can just do it just like streets. Makes sense to me.
And Brett, I, we have the five dollars on here. I don't know that we've decided on what the dollar amount. So I'm not sure how, what's the best way to address that?
Well, the, like, from my notes, the council had asked for it to be presented with the five dollars at the last meeting.
Yeah, I know for myself, it was, I was uncomfortable going any higher than five dollars. I'm just was curious.
Sure.
I mean, if that's how everyone else kind of wanted to go about it, I can, fine. I just, if if there's options that we were looking at three to five or something, whatever that number might be.
It's the, it's, you can, if it's helpful, you can think about it like the preliminary levy. It's like you're setting the max. It's not going to go higher than five. You can drop it down. I got a lot of help from Nicole Schmidt at BMI with this. And she was really, because I had a lot more stuff in here to begin with. And she really tried to simplify. So I think we can put a bunch of different options on like the website. But as far as like, when someone gets this, is it going to be interesting enough and be pithy enough? I'm thinking of Bill O'Reilly for some reason. I don't know why. My wife would choke me if I said that name. Short and sweet that they look at it, retain it, and could talk to their neighbors about it.
Yeah.
So that, that's kind of the the ebb and flow of this document. It's like, how much is too much? If you look at Chan Hassen's, it reads more like a book report. And I don't, not to judge our neighbors, but I don't know if they got the kind of readership that maybe we're going to be hoping for, or I think this is more, there's enough images and short kind of threads of comments that I think you'll get it without spending an hour reading it.
Yeah, I think that's good. I mean, short is good. You want, otherwise you'll lose them if it's longer. Under share your thoughts for the council listening session, little blurb there. Can we make that a dark blue color so that it stands out? I would really like to see people who, if they have comments, to show up. So I don't want that to sort of get lost in here we are. I want, if that's all right with the rest of the council, I think if it stands out a little bit, to see if we can get some people here to comment on it.
Yeah. So just, I just have four things that are kind of really in the weeds and very specific to the handout. For the the box with the map where it says area franchise fees, I think that needs to say area franchise fee revenue, just to make it clear that that's what those cities are bringing in. In the first paragraph, there's a mention of currently, these improvement funds are being paid for using, paid for using money from city funds collected through property taxes. I think it's important in there to say that it's a small amount of money and that the funding has been inconsistent and that it's, we haven't funded that to the level that it needs to be to complete our goals to make improvements to these streets. I don't know what the finessing of that is, but I think it's important to mention that there's a gap there so that it doesn't seem like, well, you're already collecting for taxes then by.
Should it say taxes and assessments then? Because do our, well, I mean, if.
But the assessments aren't going to go away.
Yeah. The assessments are for improvements. They don't go towards maintenance.
Okay. This is nitpicky, but in that second, over the next five years paragraph, kind of the last sentence, this maintenance includes street mill and overlay projects. And I think we should add for some of the oldest streets in the city, including Bluffs, Kirchi, Sixth Street. And then I think the.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Sorry. Over the next five years in that section.
Yep.
The last sentence that says this maintenance includes street mill and overlay projects. And then I think what should be added in there is the term, some of the oldest streets, for some of the oldest streets in the city, including.
No more description, I agree with you.
Yeah, just to make it clear. Especially for some, maybe some newer residents who may not realize how old some of the streets are.
Right.
And then I think, like me, do what you want with those three pieces of feedback. This one, I feel very, very strongly about. I think we're still missing the what is a franchise fee. We all know what a franchise fee is, but I think it's, it's missing it. Franchise fee is a monthly fee that's added to cable and gas. And I think it, this box, the call-out box, talks a lot about what our neighbors are doing. And while we get a lot of that of Chaska comparisons, I think it's important to really put more of an emphasis, size on, emphasis on what we're talking about. Because I'm not sure that we're in too deep in this to not know what a franchise fee is. But I don't think that my neighbor would necessarily know. And I think there needs to be more of a call-out about.
Right.
Exactly what we're talking about and what this is going to mean to everybody's pocketbook.
The only thing I really like about the franchise fees is that everybody using the services pays the same amount, whether it's a business, whether it's residents, whether it's a, a, the church. Everybody that's using the service pays the same amount. That's versus tax, there is, it's a user tax.
Yeah, so we could just say that there are a franchise fee is paid by every user of gas, electric, cable as part of their monthly bill.
Yep.
Courtney, I have a question for you. So we have, you know, obviously we have limited space here. I'm trying to understand exactly what you're looking for. So if it says, I mean, what, I was trying to see your vision. I know what you're trying to get at, but I can't put it.
I think that this can be made smaller because I think this is not one of those. It's good that we're in a good company on collecting these franchise fees. I think it's just more important that we talk about, and it can go wherever. But I think we need a more specific call-out of what is a franchise fee? Because I think that that's.
You need a little more definition. You want like a little bit of a definition about what a franchise fee is.
Right, a franchise fee is.
But because, because you know what a franchise fee is.
Oh, right.
It's Andy.
Right.
You know? So.
Depends, will you be listening to me when I was talking? No, we're not.
Right. So I think, you know, we we know this because we're here.
Right.
I do like the map, though. I think that is a good tell there to say, hey, here is what our neighbors are doing. I don't have a problem with the map next to it. I'm, in fact, I think that that is a very strong statement about what's happening in our area. I do agree with you, though, that there should maybe be, and not much, because again, it starts to read like a book report, how fast do we lose people? But maybe a little bit of something about our description of what a franchise fee is.
And I think it's just a. And I think it's just a sentence or two, but.
Yeah, it's literally.
I think that that's still missing in here because this focuses a little, the way it's written, it focuses a little bit more on what our neighbors are doing. And again, this isn't gonna be one of those.
You can take that, the plus five dollars box and make it a bigger box that said a franchise fee is, you could do that.
I, I mean, the five dollar needs to be in there, so.
Yeah, but keep that box and, and just start it with, what is a franchise fee?
We'll get you there.
Okay.
I have some feedback on it. Um, that first sentence, the city of Carver has twenty-one miles. Maybe something just to clarify what, that it's not future roads, but maybe just the over twenty mi- twenty miles of existing roads, just so that it's really specific that it's for existing roads. Nothing future. Um, on the, uh, balloons for the dollar amounts, is it possible to separate how much of that revenue was from residential versus commercial or anything in the other category? What I'm thinking is, I often hear people just jump to say, well, Chaska gets that revenue too because of all the commercial and, you know, the, the, the way they run the utilities. Is there a way to do that?
Results based on what Mayor Ryan said, it's all gonna be very heavily residential.
Yes, although you should know that in a, in the city, you, you're nowhere near to this position yet, but in pretty much any franchise ordinance I've ever been involved in, the fee escalates based on the use. So, large commercial users pay substantially more than five dollars. You know, that, that's a policy decision the council hasn't made yet, but I expect that when I come to you with initial drafts of ordinances, I'm gonna show you what I'm used to seeing in other communities, which is commercial users pay more because they use more electricity. It's an escalating scale.
Lori, talking about the size of this and how much information we can actually fit on here. And you know, Brent had mentioned to put more of that information on our website and on, on things like that. Do you think that will suffice for you? For what you're looking for is to have that information in other places rather than, than trying to shove, shove, shove into the circles?
No, if it was just, um, that, it was, how does it actually impact the resident? How is it just for a resident? I don't want somebody to see this and be like, oh, well, they probably get most of that money from their commercial. This doesn't apply to me. Or, there, we can't compare apples to apples here because it's, you know, a percentage is coming from commercial versus residential. I don't know, maybe.
Well, I, I think we could get it. We don't have it and we, um, I, we'll attempt to get anything the council requests. The, we'd be, we'd be asking these other cities to, in essence, go through all their billings and segregate that information out and prepare it. So, I know that I can't get it in this insert. And, but if you want it, we can get it, but we, right now, we just have their total numbers on uti- per utility.
No, I'm just more thinking like what type of, um, reactions we might get. So, it's, unless there's a strong request from residents for it, no. But then my other idea was, um, if, uh, almost like how we did with the, um, proposed tax levies, where you kind of see a current state and future state, where if you almost had just a really small sampling of, let's say, somebody's gas bill is eighty-five, well, if we had eighty-five dollars, if we had this, it would now be ninety dollars. Like, show a way that it actually applies to a resident.
I guess for me, I think the plus five dollars per cable, electric and gas covers that.
I actually had somebody ask me if this meant five dollars for all three or fifteen for all three.
Five dollars for all three.
But so.
Per, we can, uh.
Each in there or something.
Yeah, we could, we could do something to clarify that.
Yeah, just anything to, to not have people go the wrong direct, like, have any misconceptions. Get it out there real clear.
Yes, and I think.
But I like the idea of kind of a sample.
There are gonna be folks.
Yeah.
This is a new.
It's still gonna happen.
Yeah.
If we can get in front of any of it. Those, that's just my idea, like a, a sample of how, how it would look to them on their bill. Be another line item.
I, I have, uh, some ideas that we can try out.
Alright. Any further comments, thoughts? Alright. Moving on to item nine point eight, the twenty-twenty city council appointments. Mr. Merrick.
So, in the past, we've done this at our first, our twenty-twenty appointments, or the council's twenty-twenty appointments, excuse me, at the first meeting in January. We had contemplated putting this on your work session agenda or did, uh, with the idea of the council discussing it in a more of an informal format. So, you didn't have to discuss it at a regular meeting. So, that one though.
Yeah.
So, you don't, you don't necessarily, you can, you can choose to kind of do this tonight and then Vicki can have a, um, a motion or, excuse me, incorporate that into the resolution so it's ready to go, um, on the sixth. Um, or you can punt and say, we'll take care of it on the sixth.
Let's just have at it right now and get it out of the way.
Well, and I just wanted to kind of preface this, um, by, for our commissions for HPC, parks and planning. I feel really strongly that those are volunteer commissions. So, these are folks who are giving up their Monday, Thursday, Saturday, whenever they meet.
Tuesday.
Nights, sure, Tuesday, um, nights. And I, um, in my mind, our role is not to be leading these meetings. It's not to be facilitating the meetings. It is to be kind of a, a fly on the wall and to be able to provide reports back. I think in this list, there are very much options for folks who wanna have more, um, hands in the process, you know? For things like parks and planning, we all get a vote and an opportunity to discuss and ask questions when it comes to us at this level. And for, you know, for some of those more hands-on appointments, there's the, um, the Southwest Transportation Alliance, the Carver Business Alliance, the Southwest Transit Board, um, where you can get in the weeds and have more of a leadership role if you so choose and kind of help, um, with the direction. But I just wanted to kind of get that out there that I really, really, really want, to share my vision for the roles of the council liaison to our three commissions in the city. So, um, but with that, we wanna start slogging through this. Acting Mayor.
I would be happy to have my name there again. I haven't used it at all, so.
Put my name back there.
Overall, I'm happy with what we have set up. I I support duplicating it, but I still think we can go through each one.
Yeah.
For me, I'm good.
I'm fine with having, yeah, that's fine with me. I halfway would like to see a little bit of variety because then I think we get a little bit more interaction. And I think there is a little bit more room for kind of a, just a different face for, again, like the three commissions, our city commissions.
That's true, but on the flip side, when you have been working with a group for a long time and you start to get into something, like, you're working really hard through these things and then all of a sudden you, you switch into something else. So, it can go both ways.
Yeah.
There's something to be said for having some longevity where you can really dig in, you understand where, where they're coming from and what's been going on, so.
And I get it, and that's fine. I probably wanna see a little, like, that's exactly the reason why I think for the commissions, we should mix it up. But I get it.
I disagree.
You've, I get what you're saying for the other things where if we switch on the Transportation Alliance, it's probably better to have a consistent base there, so.
See, and I'm complete opposite. I think having a little bit more consistent base for the commissions, um, is a good idea for the Transportation Alliance and things like that. Those ones to me, going through, are, those are switch. It's fine, so.
Alright, well, let's see who's interested in.
I myself would like to stay on the planning commission as the liaison.
Also interested in planning commission?
No.
There you go, Glenn.
Alright.
I would like to stay on the HPC.
Anybody else interested in the HPC?
No.
You're done, alright? Sprung out splendidly.
We got acting mayor is Christie, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, parks?
I would like to stay on that, but I'm open to something new.
Anyone else interested in parks?
I think we're all interested in parks.
Yeah.
We're all very interested in parks. Yeah, thanks for saving me.
I know.
I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the way this is. Maybe we, I mean, this is what we said at the beginning of nineteen, right? You guys, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I just.
Yes, you got voluntold for yours.
I, exactly. But I mean, you kind of said it at two thousand nineteen. How about we review it every two a year? I mean, I don't know, for some con- continuity.
Cause there's some other stuff that goes along with this.
Yeah, I don't mind the review every year. I think we just procedurally do every year.
Okay, fine.
Lori Sayer, if you want Parks Commission?
I am fine with it. I'm already on the HPC Commission. I do.
Alright. Um, Carver County Leaders.
I might be kind of interested in that one.
I, I've, I've missed one meeting because of schedule conflict. They meet, uh, quarterly, um.
What time? Oh, I used to.
They're pretty early AM, maybe at seven-thirty.
I would be interested in, in coming off of the Transportation Alliance, Alliance and going back to the Carver County Leaders. But, if someone else is interested.
What is the Transportation Alliance? How often do they meet?
They meet quarterly on a Friday morning at seven-thirty and, um, it's basically a, a regional transportation meeting. I, Brent, maybe you want.
Carver Business Alliance meetings have Fridays at eight AM?
Oh, often have a Carver Business Alliance meetings.
Once a month.
Generally no, because they met last Friday. So, I don't know if their cadence is the second week and not the third week, but.
Well, I'd be willing to, um, if, if the spot's open, do the Carver Business Alliance.
I was gonna say that.
Finally just gotten to know that one. I finally gotten to know.
Then I would say no, knowing that.
Yeah.
Cause I think that's.
Well, then, does somebody else want Carver Leaders and all stay on the Transportation Alliance?
Well, Kristi, I could do the.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I could do the Transportation Alliance.
Okay.
And then, Kristi, you take.
I mean, if that works. Glenn, we didn't ask you for any. I'm sorry, Glenn. Did you want the Carver County Leaders, Glenn?
I only have.
Did you want the Transportation Alliance?
Come on Friday morning, seven-thirty.
Yeah, and you have to do your hair, cause it's a meeting, right?
I do.
Yeah.
Is, are there more?
Alright. Let's, Carver County, let's see, Carver County Leaders, Southwest Transit Board. Does anybody?
Can you say a little bit what?
Sure. That's, um, Southwest Transit, like the transportation.
Okay.
So, like the bus service.
And so quarterly.
Uh, monthly.
Monthly.
Monthly, they meet on generally Tuesday nights. They don't meet in August because that's, I think it's like the third Thursday of the night. They don't meet in August because that's state fair time and they're very busy. Uh, but I think it's roughly ten or eleven meetings a year.
I'd like to stay on the township board. Does that help?
Does that meet twice a year? Yes.
Yeah.
Totally do that.
Okay, so the township fire board, right?
Yep.
Joy?
And I'd like to, yes, and I'd like to stay on the Carver Business Alliance. I'm gonna fill that one in.
And then I'm Carver, oh, sorry.
Southwest Transit Board. I'll jump in.
Ooh, nice.
And then I'll take Carver County Leaders.
Look at that.
Look at that.
Alright.
We mixed it up slightly.
Good. Alright.
Why are you just?
No, I'm.
What are you two doing over there? You're smirking.
I feel like we need two hours.
I feel like we, we'll talk about the session.
Alright, um, city managers' report.
Yeah.
Less things on the work session.
Okay, guys, folks, let's go.
We're still in work session.
So, I don't put my future employment status in jeopardy and wrap the mayor up. I'd like to talk to the council about establishing like a hard deadline for the work session so we're not rushing you from that.
Thank you.
Room to this room. So, if that's, so we put that on the agenda. So, if that's seven forty-five or, cause I know it can get, we like to keep that door open because we don't wanna be in a closed-door meeting. This room's got glass, so it's more visible, but I don't like the optics of having that shut during work session, but then as the meeting time approaches, there's obviously people in the hall. So, if you're gonna share with me your expectations of like when the, um, adjournment is, then we'll manage that schedule of work session agenda items a little bit more, um.
I would really like to see a fifteen-minute between. I'm really tired of running from one to the other and not having a few minutes to take care of things and then missing the pledge of allegiance at the beginning of the meetings. I'm not really happy about that, so.
So, throwing it out there, do we need to start work session at five?
I can't, some of we.
I, I'm just throwing it out there. We keep going over.
Maybe less things on the work session, or maybe Dan Lannister, engineer, only gets to speak for forty minutes instead of an hour and fifteen.
I think we need at least ten minutes. So, yeah, I.
Yep.
I appreciate that. Thank you for bringing that up. I think we definitely need a heart out on those meetings, so.
So, what am I hearing? Seven forty-five or seven fifty?
Seven fifty.
I think seven.
Six.
Six fifty.
Six fifty. Or, yeah, six fifty.
And then the, uh, other item I wanted to, uh, bring up, um, is Dan Lannister met with Carver County related to the Jonathan Carver Parkway stormwater. And at this point, the county is kind of foregoing any additional kind of study on the pond and they're really, uh, dedicating their focus on bringing that stormwater down, down Jonathan Carver Parkway. Uh, they've met with, uh, the Carver County, uh, Water Management Organization or Paul Mullin and that group, and they're looking at various functions. So, uh, for now, um, then we can send out some correspondence back out to, uh, the residents that we invited to the Parks Commission. Uh, at least for now, the pond in Community Park isn't be, isn't being considered as a viable option. If something happens with County Road eleven and, uh, there's some circumstance, um, where we have to go back to the park, uh, we'll address that. But right now, that isn't looking like that's gonna happen.
That is fantastic news.
Alright. Yeah, Brent? Okay, um, council member communications?
I have nothing. We didn't have a Carver Business Alliance meeting. Got rescheduled. Now I can't. I came here on Friday.
No, it's in two days, four days.
I know, so, yeah. So, it was on my calendar for last Friday.
It's always the third weekend.
I know, but the meeting is from. Never mind. It's, it was on my calendar. Brent sent the notification two days before, so I assumed it was still staying on that Friday. I wasn't the only one, I think, who showed up, but I can't attest this coming Friday. It's on my city calendar.
Alright, Lori?
I don't have any updates from the Park Commission, but I wanted to thank the staff that puts the packets together, um, for including the facility rental activity report.
Yes.
That was good to see.
I second that. That was good.
Appreciated it.
I look forward to continuing to see.
Yes.
Alright, um, from me, um, after our last council meeting, we had a, um, reporter, reporter might be strong, uh, communications personnel from the Federal Reserve Bank in Minneapolis who came out, um, to do an interview with both me and former mayor Mike Webb about the Carver Crossing project and his, um, his story is going to be about community housing projects that face a large amount of community backlash or lack of support. So, um, I think it's gonna be a number of weeks before we see a draft from him, but, um, it was good to get Mike's perspective as the mayor and then I was able to share some of my insight from being on the planning commission, um.
What was the draft? I'm sorry, maybe I missed something. Before we see a draft from him?
He's gonna share as an article.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
I'm in council law, so I'm like a drafter?
Yeah. A drafter is all the classes to review.
Gotcha, thank you.
Um, I, not related to the city of Carver, but a really good event, um, I went to the Marnita's Table event that was at, um, the Chaska Event Center, which was a really cool event. Um, lots of good food, lots of interaction with your neighbors. There were a fair amount of folks from Carver, including, um, Brent and Erica who attended and it was a pretty good event. Had a regional council of mayors meeting, um, which was good and we heard a little bit more about, um, the refugee issue that I'm sure we've all seen and read about, um, in the Star Tribune and seen on CARE-11 reports. And then was able to go to the HPC meeting last year. So, shared that I'm trying to hit each of the commissions by the end of the year, which is something that I started a little bit late on. Um, so with the Parks Commission meeting being canceled in December. December, I wasn't able to get to them, but I will try to hit their meeting in January.
Um, I don't have a lot, I'm glad you were able to get to the HPC meeting, I apologize, I was out ill last week, so, um, I'm glad to be back in the land of the living, but other than that, I don't think I have anything, we are, I'm sorry, we are actually doing our soggy bottom planning, which I mentioned before, so we will be getting a flyer to you, to you, sorry, Vicky, and then it is the twenty-fifth of January, we have not named our recipient yet this year, but there'll be more information to come.
Uh, HPC, or the Planning Commission, uh, meeting was canceled, so I got nothing to report on city business, but I would like to thank all the staff who put together this budget process and presented it in a way that made sense. It was very, um, very succinct in what was, what we needed to accomplish, um, very tight with the penny, um, after all, we just did build the city hall. So, with what we have coming on with, um, the water treatment facility, um, you guys did a stellar job, and I'd like to say to all the citizens out there who use the rink, stay off the ice until they say it's okay to use it.
Great, um, the only other thing, I just, um, kind of piggybacking on your comments, not only did staff do a great job with the budget, but they consistently do a great job, this is a five hundred and five-page packet, and this is a lot of work that goes into that. So, I just wanna recognize, Vicky, your team and everybody who's sitting in here played a role in probably submitting stuff and deadlines and getting stuff um, submitted, but not only this packet, you guys do a great job consistently year-round, um, and with this being our last meeting of twenty nineteen, kind of closing the book on the year, um, and wishing everybody a happy holiday season, and hopefully everybody gets some time off to enjoy with their families, so thank you all for all of your hard work, really, really, really appreciate it. Even you, Larry.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Right, we have a motion by Councilmember Mark and a second by Councilmember Henry, any further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.